Good afternoon. We call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Thank you all for coming. I kind of left the agenda, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to go through it fairly expeditiously. I would thank our audience for being here, young people especially, good to see you. This is the Liberty County Board of Commissioners' mid-month meeting. We meet twice a month. This is the meeting where we do a lot of recognition, so we're looking you guys in through this agenda. Thank you for coming. We already arrived at accomplishments and we encourage you. The school's about ready to get out, so please be safe. Pick up a book every now and then during the summer, kind of keep that learning process going if you will, please. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mosley, would you be so kind as to leave us in our invocation? Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious God and Father, we thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. We thank you for the beautiful weather. We thank you for the sunshine as well as terrain. We pray that you would be with these liberty bodies as they talk about the business of this community. We pray that you would be with them and give them the divine insight that they need, Father, as they transact the business of this community. We deeds in all the other blessings wasted in the powerful name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the beautiful, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We begin right here with our agenda proclamations. National Pollinator Week, Dr. Karen Bell, followed by National Tourism Week, Ms. Leah Poole.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Karen Bell, the Executive Director for Keep Liberty Beautiful, and it's the Save Our Pollinator Week. So in June, this is a celebration that we use for a whole week to let people know that we need our pollinators and how important they are. So I've placed some pollinator seeds on your desk next to each commissioner and chairman. So if you have the opportunity to plant them, you can welcome some wonderful pollinators to your area. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Did you bring... you bring some extras of these?
Just...
Just, okay, all right.
For the little ones, I had some tattoos by what...
Okay, all right, yes, that's what I was gonna hit it.
This is the proclamation for National Pollinator Week. Whereas pollinator species such as birds and insects are essential partners of farmers and ranchers in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollination plays a vital role in the health of our national forests and grasslands, which provide forest, fish, and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse ecosystems. And whereas Liberty County has helped wildlife habitats and public lands such as state forests and grasslands for decades. And whereas Liberty County Board of Commissioners provide producers with conservation assistance to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on working lands and wildlands. Now therefore, I, Chairman Donnell Lovett, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through 23rd, 2024, as National Pollinator Week, so declared on the 16th day of May, 2024, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance.
And I'm sorry, I thought Ms. Desiree was behind me. This is one of our board members. Any questions?
You all want to come forward?
Yes, sir.
Young people, I'm not sure what's taught... when it's taught in schools. Are you all learning in schools about pollination and bees and pollinate the plants? You do? I see some head nodding out there. So if they do that, that allows the plants to do what? The... You know it. I can tell that you know it. What happens? If they pollinate the plants, the plants can do what?
He said, "Come on."
And the bachelors can do what? Grow? Then yes, all right.
All right, you want to count them down, Joe?
One, two, three.
I'm here.
Y'all may as well stay here for Leah. National Tourism Week.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I guess. We are here for the proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week, which is in May. So during this week, we celebrate our hoteliers and their staff, as well as our historic sites, and their... if they have paid staff or volunteers. So we make sure we go and visit all of those folks, and we have little gifts for all of them, just to say thank you for the great job that they do when folks visit our community and making them feel welcome, telling them what there is to see in our community, that kind of thing. That's what we're here for.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Proclamation: Whereas the travel and tourism industry within the United States is essential to driving economic growth and job creation across all states, destinations, and communities, and is essential to the competitiveness of our nation across the globe. And whereas the travel industry is among the largest private sector employers in the U.S., directly employing 8 million Americans and supporting 15 million jobs in 2023. And whereas travelers spending directly generated tax revenues of $37.4 billion throughout the state of Georgia in 2022. $3.2 billion of that total is credited to the Georgia 1 district and includes Liberty County. And whereas district travel impact for visitor spending is noted in five categories, and in 2022, Liberty County's largest impact came from food and beverage, generating $36.7 million, and lodging generating $33.8 million. And whereas local tax receipts equal $442 saved by each Liberty County household and 1,436 jobs supported by tourism. And as the county continues to grow, savings are expected to increase. And whereas community members, visitors, and the Liberty County Convention and Visitors Bureau work together to promote a healthy and vibrant tourism community in the Liberty County area in order to move our local economy forward and serve as a pillar of economic growth. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the power vested in me, Donnell Lovett, as Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, that May 19th through 25th, 2024, be declared National Tourism and National Travel and Tourism Week in Liberty County and call upon our citizens to join in this special observance by enjoying all the special events and sites that draw others to visit our community, proclaimed and signed the 16th day of May.
Thank you, sir. Still in the spirit of... Still in the spirit of celebration, GRPA State Track Meet Certificates of Achievement, LCRD Director Mr. Raymond Gross.
Good evening, y'all.
Hello, sir.
I am here to recognize... I have the Board of Commissioners recognize our newest state champions at the GRP State Track Meet a couple of weekends ago. Liberty County represented... these young athletes represented Liberty County very well. We finished third amongst the ladies in the state, and we finished fifth in the men's category, the young fellows category at the state behind major metropolitan areas. We had five state champions, four actually. One of them was a dual state champion in the high jump and the standing long jump. And the standing long jump was a state record. I'd like to recognize Josiah Tripple.
Let's go down, Commissioners, and have them come around to us. Hold on.
Raymond, what age group?
Okay, that's the 11- and 12-year-old boys.
Oh, okay.
11, 12-year-old boys, dual state champions, Josiah Tripple.
Yeah, I just wanted to... I got the boy part.
Yeah, you got to.
Maybe if you'd told us ahead of time, we'd have got it at our shoulders and...
I wouldn't.
Track shoes.
All right, the second state champion we want to recognize is Johnny Richardson. He was a 13- and 14-year-old boys 800-meter champion with a new state record of 2... 2.0434 is a new state record. He also... he also finished third in the mile. He didn't run his race, but in 800, he ran his race the way he planned it and he executed it. Our state... our third state champion is Ms. Kaylee Stevenson. She's the softball throw champion, and she finished first in girls, 11, 12-year-olds. Thank you, congratulations. Our fourth and final champion is Mr. Caden Miller. He was the 9- and 10-year-old boys high jump champion. His high jump was three foot, 10 inches. His high jump was, uh, three foot, ten inches.
Freeman Grove.
Freeman Grove.
At this point, uh, I'd like to recognize those parents who contribute their time and energy and, uh, efforts in order to help us do what we do at the Recreation Department. Uh, Josiah Triplet's, his parents' names are Latrell Bacon and Ken Richardson. If you're here, please stand. Johnny Richardson, uh, his parents are LaShawn Richardson and Cedric Sotila. Soria, sorry. And Kaylee Stevenson's parents are Tiffany, Ms. Tiffany Stevenson and Brandon Stevenson. And Caden Miller's parents are Dorothy Holt and Chris Miller. Can we get a picture of everybody now? Would y'all take a pic? Would, we ask the parents and athletes to come up here and get a picture with the Board of Commissioners right here before we finish up, if you would, please. Parents and athletes. Did you go to Bridget's Ceremony today? The Bridget's Ceremony, right, what did they?
Can you get the gap right there? Yes, sir. Right there, right there, right there, right there. Yes, sir.
Again, thank you all for what y'all do, parents, athletes, for representing Liberty County.
We just want to encourage you, young people, say a job well done, uh, but be champions in the classroom as well as on the, on the track field as well. And, and, and we look forward to being champions in society. The day will come when you will have our places here, so we look forward to your growth in Liberty County. Parents, thank you, we know it takes a lot of sacrifice to do what you do, to make this happen, so, uh, text the village, text the village, so thank you for being the village and today we are Liberty County proud, these young people. One more hand again for all the champions. Thank you so much. This time you need to be excused, you can be, we don't make you stay for.
Is it Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, Department of Administration reports. First, your financial report.
Financial report.
Then we go into our budget.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here this evening to report on the county's March twenty-twenty-four financial statements. Um, as of the end of March, we have collected approximately eighty-seven percent of our budgeted revenues for the general fund. Um, we have spent approximately seventy-four percent. Uh, we currently have five-point-eight months of operating expenditures in our unreserved fund balance. Um, looking at the general fund year-to-date expenditures, there are, um, still a handful of departments that are running slightly ahead of schedule. However, we'll continue to monitor these and, if needed, do a, a year-end, um, budget adjustment to ensure that nothing runs over. Um, the elections department, um, their technical services is up, um, basically due to the municipal elections that were held in November and December. Risk management is currently showing ahead of schedule, um, due to our annual pension contribution payment that we make to ACCG, uh, in January. Public in, oop, public information, uh, is showing, um, ahead of schedule, uh, due to the cost of our service awards luncheon that we held earlier this year. The general administration and conservation administration departments, um, each of these departments paid one-time annual dues at the beginning of the fiscal year, so this will level out, um, as we go throughout the, to the end of the fiscal year. Uh, let's see, judicial, uh, I think I already said that one. Let me get back to this. Judicial administration is running a little ahead of schedule, um, due to payments made to court reporters, but we do not expect this to exceed its budget for the year. Um, these come in spurts when there is court, um, and there's other times we don't have any, or very little expenses. The district attorney, uh, had purchased some books and periodicals, um, in the early months, causing them to be a little ahead of schedule, uh, but we do not anticipate them to, uh, run over budget for the year. Animal Services, uh, had some vehicle repairs early in the fiscal year, causing them to be a little ahead of schedule as well. The community services, this is just due to a timing of the payments, um, and matching grant funds, uh, but we do not anticipate this to run, uh, over budget for the year. The, uh, the C, our CGC A A and Chamber of Commerce, this is also due to timing of payments, um, but we, this will not exceed budget for the year. And turning the page to solid waste. Um, at the end of March, Solid Waste Fund has approximately net income of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We have collects, collected approximately eighty-one percent of our budgeted revenues and spent seventy percent of budgeted expenditures. Additionally, currently, there are no departments in the Solid Waste Fund that are running, um, ahead of schedule. And similarly, on the next page, our special revenue funds are all operating within their, um, budgets as well.
Well, Mr. Chair, of course she goes too much further. Uh, on animal control, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Do animal control have new trucks, or they got still old trucks, or did they go in with the fleet service?
Yeah, what, they, they do. What that was, was they were using an old EMA, um, two-fifty that used to be over there, and that's what had to have the, the, uh, work done on it early in the year. We've since swapped that truck out, and they've got one to pull what they need to.
Okay, uh, Mr. Samantha.
Yes, sir.
Uh, CGC A A is Coastal Georgia.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I know, we don't do any contrib-, contribution to them anymore, do we?
Uh, maybe that title is not correct on this budget sheet, um, but that should be the Senior Citizens Center and the Chamber of Commerce, yes, sir. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, and also, why can't that be on a separate line?
Each of those?
Right.
Yeah, sure. Um, we can split those, yes, sir.
Yeah, let, let's split those up, so we'll know exactly where and what.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Matt, I, I got a question. It looked on the Georgia Alabama Land Trust, um, say the dues are paid for the entire year. Do you know how many parcels we have, Joey? It's under the Georgia Land Trust.
Ten, roughly ten. I looked at them last week, as a matter of fact.
Ten? How many acres?
Oh.
Really?
I, I'll look it up and send it to you, I'd be glad to.
Okay.
I had, I had one of the green space holders call, one of their family members called.
That's actually deferred, the taxes?
No, sir, they still have to pay taxes on it.
Well, I mean, the, the, um, county taxes, they can put a house on it if it's.
It, it depends on what the agreement says. In, in the conservation use, under Georgia Tax Code, the tax assessors, if you put it in, uh, land conservation, you're, you're, you can have, I think, as many as two primary dwellings on there. And, and the old green space documents that were bought with the state fund a year ago, which is what these guys are looking at, those are more restrictive. You can have easements on there, you can do recreational opportunities that don't change the nature of the land, but you're not even allowed to have a house on it. So they're two different, they're really two different things.
Okay, thank you.
Now, moving on to the sales tax reports. For sales tax six, uh, we have approximately six-point-five million left to expend for these projects. Let me see what kind of order that these got put in.
Yes, seven's first.
Okay, my apologies. Sales tax seven, uh, we collected one million, one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, uh, in the month of March. It was another great month. Since this SPOSS began, we have collected just shy of twelve million dollars and have expended approximately four-point-nine million. Uh, for T-SPOSS, uh, for the month of March, we collected one-point-one million. And since the inception of T-SPOSS, we have collected over thirty-eight-point-eight million of our anticipated fifty-four million, and have spent approximately eighteen-point-two million on our SPOSS projects. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, for sales tax six, we're no longer collecting the tax, but we're just, uh, spending down the remaining, uh, sales tax funds on our, um, existing projects, and have approximately six-point-five million to spend out of sales tax six. And that's my presentation for March, and I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
Joey, all the, all that six-point-five million is obligated, designated, spoken for, whatever the word is?
To, to, yes, sir, to, to qualifying projects in there.
To qualifying projects, okay. So, and just so the jump up in the qualifying project, I mean, all those that were, um, made in reference to in the referendum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Samantha, um, Board of Elections, taking it way back, I apologize. Technical and computers?
Yes, sir. They had the need to buy some computers, and the computer line item had been cut during last year's budget time for all departments, but they had a need and had to buy some. And then the technical services, um, they're higher than what was budgeted for, um, but I know we had some billings out to the other cities for these costs, and it's bringing in more revenue than we budgeted as well.
I know generally she runs a very tight budget.
Absolutely.
And the computers, we opted, like you said, we cut them, so, cut means cut.
Well, we took, I think what we did was, is, um, you know, we removed computers from every line item, and then we just buy them in a quantity if we need to. And that's what happened. So you go in, that'll be one budget, you'll come in at the end of the year and true up. I think she was expecting to, to be able to take the revenue that we get back from the city elections and post it back to the expenditure side, which you really shouldn't do. So, uh, you will, you will have to come back and true that up. But that other revenue will help offset that. The technical services is, you might remember that with the state system, uh, I'm sorry, with the, with, yes, with the state computers that are out there, you're required to carry a contract with a certain vendor to monitor those systems while elections are going on, and because we had the other elections, you had to pay that monitor along, it's a contract for technical services.
And I'm, I'm thinking, we're in the height of the election season, so, um, but as far as the computers, as far as you know, she, she has what she needs.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
And then we got one more to go by, and then, of course, the next will fall into the next fiscal year.
Well, we're on, in, uh, in the county elections, we've got, some places we're having to rent too, I guess, to have polling places?
You will, for the May, for them, uh, for this, for the one this month, you will, yes, sir.
But I mean, of course, last year was nothing to worry about, but this year we're gonna have what, you got, how many different ones will we be renting?
Well, you got, uh, polling places.
First Baptist Church, you got a church on, uh.
And church.
Where'd they, did they, they still vote it? In the curved Old Eland Road?
Yes, at the church, St. Luke, I believe.
I think there was a total of about five that they rented, yes, sir.
You know what the dollar amount is we spent on that?
I don't, but we can pull that also, we're glad to, yes.
She budgets for that.
Sir?
She budgets for that.
Well, I figured she did, I was just, you know, you figure how much we may be able to look at a place to have something permanent. I know that's our thing to.
Well, that's, that's part of the long-term plan that we have, to find them a place. Mr. Chair, that's about the dollars to support it.
Joey, Sam, uh, are y'all familiar with the, uh, the new paper pro-, the paper ballots that's coming out? Is that going to affect this budget or the next budget? Because all of the paper that's there now, after the May election, uh, my understanding it cannot be used.
It can't, the new, the, one of the many, and I'm gonna run over those legislative things at the next meeting, but one of the many bills that affected elections, I think about seven or eight, now requires that ballots have watermark, and so that's a change. And so I think she had twenty thousand sheets of paper that were already bought for the ballots to be used this time, and now they've got to get watermark paper.
Right.
We, when we talked this past week, she, she was still, the state had called to, to ask her how, how many they had to have.
Right.
With the thought that maybe the state might provide those, because everybody, everybody in the state might, so she was unsure as of yesterday or day before, as to whether they might, might not, but if they don't, we will have to pay the cost of the watermark paper.
What happened to the twenty thousand sheets?
They will be.
That she bought in preparation?
They, they also asked when they called, how many they had on hand.
Yeah.
And I think the thought was hopefully, according to her, hopefully that the state may also provide some funds to help find a vendor for that paper, because it's thermal, I mean, it's, it's expensive paper.
It only seems right that they would.
That's right.
You let me get that far down the road, and then you tell me, yeah. And it's not just Liberty County, it's all the counties, so everybody should be.
All my every kind of state.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, uh, I need to go back as well, but, uh, I, I know we briefly went over the, the solid waste, and, uh, Ms. Richardson, if you can, uh, can you explain again, uh, about the?
That's right.
The difference? Because if I'm, because red is mean that we're in the red, correct? And black is black?
Six-thirty.
We're saying that.
Yes.
So in other words, we're, we're.
That looks like it's five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loss. You're absolutely correct. That should be expenditures over revenue.
Okay, uh, and, and, and why is that? Because I, because I, I know this is a, a separate operating budget, correct?
Hmm.
It's enterprise fund.
It is, yes, sir.
So technically, enterprise funds supposed to be able to.
Self-supporting.
Self-support itself, and is it, and I, I know we've started looking at, uh, the adjustments of, of collection, oh, yeah, we could talk about it, it's okay, is that right, y'all? I'm just, I'm, so, so, is, is it just because of, of the adjustment with, with the fees, or is it other stuff that are, is a reason? Because, because five-hundred-and-something-thousand dollars a loss is, that's pretty major.
Pretty significant, yes, sir. Um, I know we're undergoing a, a rate study right now with, with Colbertson, um.
But, so, so you're saying our rates are that much off, half a million dollars off?
If we have continued losses, I would think that, yes, sir.
Sure, I remember historically, y'all may remember, solid waste always, um, ran over, remember we, we said that, um, gosh, the conversation we used to have about, that's the nature of, and, and either we could try to write it off, remember that conversation? It's been some time ago, or, or we keep it.
It's been some time ago, or we keep it.
Well, that was actually, that was actually some, before rates were ever set years ago.
Yeah.
We were supplementing it through the general fund.
Right.
And then you moved into the rates 15 years ago or so, and that, and that should write that. I'm, I'm a little bit, let us get together and look at that, I'm a little bit confused by that. Because, because we've already billed out, you know, the charges for most of those.
Should have been, yeah.
Well, no, so charges for services would be at the transfer station. Solid waste assessments obviously come out on the tax bills and on those mobile homes that are homesteaded. But, I mean, we can go back and look, unless folks paid their taxes and didn't pay their solid waste assessments with their taxes, which some do, and they have to, you know, be followed up on, most of those should have been collected in the tax bill.
But on the, Ms. Brown, on the, like, the third page, it shows a gain of 550, so I don't know if it's all the way off.
It is actually, the actual column, revenues, 3.5 million, expenditures to date, 3 million. So it is actually a net income, even though we're.
550 is the income on that third page.
But we still have a variance of where we thought we would be compared to the budget, so it's.
So we're not in the red.
Yeah, you're not losing money overall.
On this page, we're not in the red.
Correct.
We're 550 to the good.
I apologize, yes, ma'am.
Okay, gotcha.
Look and see where the revenue number came from, because it shouldn't have been that far off.
How about, do we have any other large, like, commercial municipalities that are behind?
Well, that is where municipalities would pay, that is where the commercial stuff would come in for charges for services. That, that's the reason I really want to go back and look, to see where we got the three, $3 million revenue number from. Because it looks like it was really, it looks like it was really overstated.
Because the solid waste assessment's only 1.1.
Joey, we only actually have two cities that uses our transfer station, right? That's Hinesville and?
Hinesville, Waltiville.
And Waltiville.
I do believe that in one case, either Midway or Riceboro, occasionally their contractor will come across the scales too, and we bill them, and that would be that, where that charges for services would come from also.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to make sure that, you know, that half a million dollar isn't just off of, I, I know we're talking about readjusting fees, and I mean, you know, to, to try to offset that off of readjustment.
It's not, it's not off of bad debt.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you, Mr. Chair.
I got you.
No, I'm glad you brought it up, because I, I want to take a look at, I want to take a look at the number we're gonna use for 2024. I mean, yeah, 2025.
25, right?
For the solid waste fund and see, I'm curious where the $3 million revenue came from.
Yeah, because that, that'd be a significant bump for.
If y'all would just, at your earliest opportunity, just email us the results of that.
Yes, sir. I know that FY24, that 371,000 of other financing sources, that is the 2022 bonds. That portion that was paid for that gum branch recycling center had to be shown as solid waste revenue, but that's not a continuing revenue, that's a one-time, or over the case of two fiscal years. But that's only a piece of it. But yes, we can certainly pull that detail and.
Please do.
Absolutely.
Joey, have you checked on the, is Broadhurst gonna be able to maintain the current price of the?
They are.
But they're, they've sold, correct?
Did not, we met with them two weeks ago, and they didn't actually, they didn't, the landfill didn't sell.
Okay, so Broadhurst is still gonna be open? They just got the truck, and is it gonna be different?
Still be open. There was a change, I'm trying to remember what he told us. There was a change in a part of Broadhurst, of course, is ownership, but it didn't involve the solid waste piece. The solid waste piece stays intact, because what we were doing was negotiating next contract with them for haul and disposal, and they, they said there really, there won't be a change at all there.
All right, we'll move on now to, to the questions on, on the regular budget. Public hearing for fiscal year 25 budget, Chair entertaining motion to go into public hearing.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Hold in favor, show of hands, now to public hearing.
I'm here to present the 2025 proposed budget for the county. A summary of the budget has been posted on our website and is also available for review by the public in the Board of Commissioners' admin office. Department heads and elected officials have sent us their request, and we have gone through them in detail, working to come up with this proposed budget. The original budget request came in at approximately 66.8 million, and we worked together to make cuts of approximately 5 million for our proposed FY25 budget of 61.8 million.
But we still have time to cut more, right?
Between now and next meeting, yes, sir.
In a comparative review, our current budget for FY24 is 58 million, and we're proposing to increase about 6.67% to 61.8 million. This slide so, shows a summary of our general fund revenues, broken down by category for the proposed FY25 budget and our current FY24 budget. And each category, except for one, is expected to increase for FY25. The charges for services, brought down a few of those revenues that we have been projecting but not hitting, so I kind of brought it down to, to more realistic collections. And then others increased for, for what we actually expect to get in FY25. This is the pie chart for proposed revenues, just to show you the picture of, definitely, general property taxes are our largest revenue source, coming in at about 63%. And this covers property taxes, personal property taxes, motor vehicle tax, TAVT tax, intangible recordings, real estate tax, et cetera. Our next largest category, coming at 12%, is charges for services. Just to name a couple, includes ambulance fees, prisoner housing for other entities or governments, and the revenue that recreation brings in, such as summer camps, sports, pools, pavilion rentals, et cetera. This is the breakdown of our proposed budgeted expenditures by category. The county provides services to its citizens, and these services are carried out by the county employees. So salaries, salary and benefits is always gonna be the largest expenditure. This year, we're proposing about a 5% increase for salary and benefits. And part of the reason for the increase is that new positions were created for the FY24 budget, but only funded for half a year. And so now in 2025, we have to capture the whole year worth of these costs, of the personal costs. Another significant increase noted is purchased services, and primarily, the category is up across most departments due to just rising costs that we're experiencing overall, partly due to inflation and factors such as that. And in a pie chart format, this is our proposed expenditures. Salary and benefits make up approximately 67% of our total budget, followed by purchase services coming in at 21%. If you take the total proposed expenditures and breaking it down by function, public safety makes up about 45%. This includes your sheriff, jail, EMS, fire, coroner. With having public safety represent the largest piece of the pie, so to speak, this demonstrates your great effort and dedication to ensure public safety for your citizens. I've also included the FY24 percentages, just for comparative purposes. And overall, the segments all remain fairly consistent. If we break the budgeted expenditures down into classification of services, the mandated services make up about 47% of our total budget, followed by essential services at 52% and discretionary services around 1%. And this is a summary of the classifications. For mandated services includes things like the governing board, elections, tax commissioner, tax assessor, some of the various courts, coroner, that kind of thing. And our essential services, which are not required by law, but we do place a high emphasis here at the county, include fire, EMS, animal services, and things like that. And our discretionary services, coming in around 717,000, it's just 1% of our budget. The proposed new personnel, this also includes benefits, totals just over a million, with most of this being new personnel for public safety. With the new fire station opening, there was a need for this expense and some additional firefighters to fully staff this location. The remaining portion of the total personnel and benefits proposed is for our COLA, merit, and longevity pay for our current employees, which totals about 1.6 million. So our proposed additional personnel total is 2.6 million this year. Another thing to note is, this budget doesn't include any specific CIP or capital items. We were able to find some funding sources for many of our CIP requests through ARPA, SPOST, six and seven, for many of the urgent and necessary items. Additionally, we've been looking at department budgets to see if there's any savings in the current year and recommending those departments go ahead and buy some of the things that they know they will need. But overall, the county will address any capital on an emergency basis as those situations arise. And that includes my presentation. I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Before we engage the audience, we'll engage the commission.
We got a big audience.
I think most of us had the opportunity to spend some time in this room with, with Ms. Samantha, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Mosley, and the department heads from time to time to have gone through the budget submissions, and we heard some passionate pleas made, we heard about some, in fact, we got to really hear, especially from our, our persons who manage the courts, about what they're seeing in the court system. And I will tell the audience, this Liberty County in the circuit has the largest population, also the largest share of cases when it comes to courts. That's from juvenile all the way up to superior court. But we do share that expense with others in the circuit, and I want to appreciate, I know, I want to appreciate the DA, I want to appreciate Brandon for reaching out to the other counties, seeking and receiving more financial participations. That's a big help.
Absolutely.
Help to us, but we are a growing community, and with a growing community comes a little of everything. So we're trying to manage that the best, best that we can. Now, I don't need to tell this commission, you know, we, when she mentioned the additional public safety to the fire, we knew that was coming, because.
We did.
The fire station will open, Mr. Brown's going to report on that, I guess, a little later in the meeting, so, trying to staff, and we, and we're staffing it minimally, not ideally, but minimally. Had to make some adjustments there. Happy that EMS has settled in, you know, with their, their staffing. Now, Commissioners, you, some, some, what, a couple of years ago, you wanted to ensure that our staff was paid fairly, so we embarked on that pay scale. So I'm hoping now, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mosley, that, that we'll be fairly up to, to date, at least for.
A little while.
A little while. We don't want to get our scent given, that's done, and then, then, of course, we're awarding our staff the longevity and the merit pay with that. So that's kind of where we are to arrive at this proposed budget. And it's, it has been stated, it ain't, we're still waiting on the digest, to find what the digest will do, but we have to have a budget to start with, so this is our starting point. We do know that we can come back and make adjustments if we need to.
Joey, what, you said, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna ask you, where, where are we at in the state, just on a ballpark guess? Village-wise, you know, you hear that a lot of times, people. Of course, you know, some places don't have fire, you pay a subscription to that, and EMS and different things, recreation. Would you, if you had to drill it down, where you say we're at?
Up there. We're in the top third.
Of the highest?
Of, of the highest, that's correct. As a metropolitan area, probably up there, I mean, I looked, it's been probably eight months ago that I looked at it. But it is important to compare apples to apples, because Bryan County, perfect example, Bryan's a different village, I'm not sure what you'll do with all the growth, but they have a separate recreation fee. Chatham doesn't assess a recreation fee, but you don't, they don't run recreation. You bring your own teams to their venues, and, you know, they, they don't have a complete record. So it's important to take a look at that. Other municipalities charge a emergency service fee in the metro areas. So it's, it's not exactly apples for apples, but if you take those away, or as case be, add them back in, we're, we're in the top third, we're in the top third of the state.
And the lowest would be, if you had to?
Southwest Georgia somewhere.
Lowest would be southwest Georgia, that really is, is not having to increase services because of demand. They're not moving, they're stagnant.
And, and we're looking also at other military affiliated communities to see, because, you know, having the, you all say we're an exemption-rich community.
We are.
A high veteran population, and I was in conversation, just being clear with the, there was some military retirees who were saying they now have received the highest exemptions, you know. And we all applaud what they've done, the sacrifices they've made, but that's just a, for Liberty County, and other military affiliated counties, that's something we had to factor into, to our whole budgeting process.
So when you, when you think about it, we're, we're a community of, you know, somewhere around 70,000 folks, probably. You don't agree with the last census numbers, but you're supporting a population, transit population in and out of over 100,000 folks. So, so you gotta provide the services for that. The roads, the emergency service, and all to support those extra 30,000, but, you know, you're getting local option sales tax from them, which is good. And if economics, you know, do something with economics, and that even gets better, that's really, that's really gotta be where that tune-up comes, because, you know, you do have so many exemptions that go out, and so many that aren't taxed, that are transit that come in and out.
I just, I was thinking the other night when we approved the, the project in Midway, I don't know if that was Maxie's or Commissioner Stevens' district there on Isle of Wight, plus the housing that's gonna be different places in Hinesville area, we're just gonna have a big growth spurt, probably this year, I, I look for 90% of it to be done next year, but, yeah, you do get the taxes off of it, but the other thing is, is the services you got to provide. I mean, we know we got to try to put water in there, and then, of course, you know, we don't inspect septic tanks, but we do inspect the houses when they're built, what's in the county. But there's, there's a lot of, of land that's out there that people are, you know, are fixing to get rid of, I think. And so, some of it may be because of the taxes, and I, I hope it's not. But, you know, you just get hit numerous times a day, people saying, golly, you know, when's it gonna stop? Well, I don't know. You just have to continue to pinch your pennies.
Any comments from the audience? There being none, Chair entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
Two, I just got one. I know one thing, I don't know where it's gonna be added on at. I know this board took a, more like a motion the last meeting to have an audit done. Mr. Brown, what, what does an audit actually, roughly, how much does one cost?
It, it depends on the, really on, I would say, and Samantha can correct it here, on the magnitude of what it's about and as to whether the material is already in a format. And as to whether the material is already in a format that's easily assembled. I would tell you that the one that we're looking at doing, and we've already talked to a firm about doing it, is going to be an hourly basis, because they can't get, they won't give you a lump sum. But since it is, you know, the committee looked, it's all cataloged, pretty, pretty straightforward, not but about a little over two hundred transactions in it. I mean, they're estimating that it will take them about a week to do it. Look at it, wrap it, finish it, the whole nine yards. And that won't be eight straight hours a day, so I mean, it's
Will that be added on to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, or twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
We expect them to, they expect to be able to get started in about four weeks, and expect it to take about a week. So you, you'll be close as to whether it falls in this budget or next budget, probably captured this year's budget.
Can that be paid for out of that particular fund for that audit, or it cannot be?
It could be, if that's what the board determines.
No, but is that the right thing?
I want to go back and look at that code section to see if it references annual reconciliations to the fund. Otherwise, as y'all know, it just says law enforcement purposes. I mean, if not, we'd be better just to pull it out of the general fund.
That would be regular taxpayers' money.
Well, Joey, let me ask a question about that too. I know, Mr. Chairman, we've got a motion, but if that, if that audit is done by an outside group, like you're talking about, but would this not be something that we would look and say, ask another police and agency to come in and look at? I mean, would the GBI do it? How would they do it if they did a forensic audit? They wouldn't charge us.
Well, they would do it the same way that we're doing it. I mean, they would engage
Right.
Probably the same.
But it'd be on their dime, right?
Possibly, possibly not. Generally, what happens is, is that you do an audit, if you, you know, to do an audit. And then, depending on the outcome of the audit, as to whether one of those other agencies would step in.
Right.
So I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that probably usually the local government would do the initial at least. And then any follow-up stuff that was, that was done will be done by them, if, if necessary.
Yeah, Joey, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that you could pay for the audit out of that, out of those funds. Just, just my thoughts, just based on, I mean, that's kind of what got us to this point. You know, expenditures that may not fit the criteria. So I, I mean, it's, it would be an expense on the taxpayers, but, you know, there's also a possibility that the taxpayers could benefit from this, from this audit as well, so.
I'll, I'll let you find out, sure.
Thanks, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I know we were discussing about the, the housing and development department, sixty-three thousand. What, and I guess that, what is, was that personnel? I'm sorry. I know, I know we kind of went off.
Well, I think you changed, it wasn't, that's inspections, right?
That is, that is what that falls under. The classification's a little misleading. It has to be classified under.
So, all right, okay. I'm picking up what you're putting down now, all right. So, and so culture and recreation, okay, so I, I thought that was supposed to be parks, recreational leisure. There we go. I got you. I emailed it to you. There we go. So I understand now. So those are the additional personnel to
Yes.
Used to be inspections and additional personnel for, that used to be recreation. Okay, cool. I'm there. I'm there. Yeah, that, that was the only thing that was throwing me off. Okay. And then, and, and just like what Mr. Brown and the chair was talking about, and, and Commissioner Walden. I, I definitely understand, especially, we, we are in a, in a place here in Liberty County, not only here, but also in this region. You know, I had the opportunity to take that class on, on global economics the other day. The, the impact that this particular community is about to get is something we have never, ever seen before. And I, I think you were discussing that the other day. But I just want to make sure that we understand what is coming and the infrastructure that has to be put in place. And just like Commissioner Walden was saying, I, we understand there's hundreds and hundreds of houses that are going to be built. But more importantly, we have to figure out a way, and that's why I've been pushing for this economic development authority, because that is going to be the catalyst that brings the commercial side. And the commercial brings to more money with the less, I guess, pressure that we put on the services. So I'm, I'm all for the, the housing. I, I get the housing. But we have to make sure that we bring more commercial. And kudos to the city of Hinesville, you know, I, I, they're, they're, they've figured it out. So again, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we do have a lot of areas in the county that we could benefit from. And, and if we don't move now, and I've been saying this for a while now, if we don't move, that, that, because I'm telling you, that, that ship is out there now. The ship that I was talking about, we're going to miss. It's built, it's on the dock. And what is it, twenty thousand jobs coming with, with the Hyundai?
Approximately.
Right. That's, that's almost the same amount of people that live in the city of Hinesville, at least half. I, I mean, do, do we understand that? And off of those twenty thousand, we have to think about if, if they have a spouse and one child, we're talking about an influx of thirty thousand people. And all of them don't want to live in Chatham County, they don't want to live in FM County, they're not going to want to live in, in Bryan County. I mean, you know, they might move to Bullock, because, you know, they have that splash in the broil over there, but who knows? But the, but the, the point is, we have to And, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm begging and pleading, even if we come up with, with a committee, even if it's just me and some citizens, to, to make sure that we get this economic development authority off the ground, because it is imperative right now. I mean, the wheels are turning. And if, if, if y'all haven't seen that, that Hyundai facility, I mean, you, you could almost take a nap and wake up and you're still passing it. It's that massive. So we have to take advantage of it, because it's in our backyard. So if we try to help create this commercial to help offset, and, and, and I, I get it. You know, we, we've, we've been in the top third of, of whenever you look at the military rate. I understand, you know, there are so many different variables, you know, from the, you know, we have a millage, some people have fees, I get it. You know, we, and, and I appreciate everything that our, our citizens have done. You know, I, we are a retirement community from, you know, from past military. But even with that saying, the majority of them who retire here are like thirty-eight years old, forty years old. I mean, they're not sixty-five, with all due respect, everyone, but the majority of them are still in, you know, where they could still work, or even if they not working, they want recreation, parks, and leisure. So let's, and that's the thing, whatever our identity is going to be, let's just be the best of it. If we want to be a retirement community, let's be the best. Let's have more municipal golf courses. Let's, let's do it. I'm just saying, let's just not stand here and do nothing. And I'm not saying that we're not doing anything. I'm just saying that we just need to really dig down deep and figure out what's the best way to benefit, where whenever we talking about this budget, whenever we talking about the military rate, to know that we have done everything that we can possibly to give our citizens, including us, up here. We all pay taxes too. And I don't know if y'all have been looking at your tax bills, but I'm telling you, it's, it's getting a little bit, a little bit tough, you know? So let, let's see what we can do and put our heads together and, and, and move forward. And I know I can't make a motion in here about that, but I would love to see us come up with some type of committee, Mr. Chair. You know, if, if any of the commissioners feel free, if they want to be a part of it, so be it. If not, listen, I, I could find some citizens outside of here, and we could just need to move forward. That's the only thing I'm asking. And also, with the youth department, I'm, I'm making a request as well. If, if we could at least look at increasing that budget, because, so we don't fall in the same place we did this year, where we, we're not able to employ some of our, the youth that have took their time out to go through the application process, to go through the interview process, and we cannot find a place for them to work with the county. So I'm, that's one of my requests that I have with the budget. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier, I know where we can get thirty thousand dollars from to go with the youth.
Hey, well, you, you're pointing in the right direction, man. We, we, let's go get it.
All right, we'll talk about it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Chair, and the motion again to come out of, of here, hold it. Second?
Second.
All in favor, back in the regular session. All right, thank you, Ms. Samantha.
Thank you.
All the notes have been taken. Thank you for sharing your passions, about those things that you're passionate about. Move this county forward. Engineering? Ms. Samantha, too, thank you for emailing the finance report out to us. It gave me a chance to get a, a little peek at it. I didn't get to go through all of it with a fine tooth comb, but it really helps to have that when you can to send it out a few days prior to the meeting. Which had one time's sake couldn't be done. Who seconded that motion?
The afternoon.
What you did?
Me.
Eddie, it was Eddie. Okay.
You made the motion. Ms. Long?
Yes, sir. All right, first thing on the agenda tonight is Island's Highway Box Cover. We took bids to get on that project. We made some changes. The price came in, we had one bid from Platinum Paving, and they've done some jobs for us and did okay. I think the biggest problem we have sometimes on them with getting some areas of grassing fixed. But asphalt construction part's been good. Still working on the grassing. Their price was a million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars even, which includes an option for Cofford Dam to aid in construction, which was six hundred and ten thousand dollars. What we'd like to do is recommend that we enter in a contract with Platinum Paving Concrete, an amount of, I'm sorry, it's one million nine hundred and seventy-seven. I have a typo in there. I do apologize for that.
But which is it?
It's one million nine hundred and seventy-seven. The, the big tabulation you have is on the back. Everybody should have a copy of it. Entering the contract with Platinum Paving Concrete, an amount of one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, with an initial change order to remove the Cofford Dam, resulting in a cost of one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars even. We also recommend that ten percent contingency be allowed for this project. And we have just shy of nine hundred thousand dollars for FEMA funds on that. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
That's, that's right. And we, I wanted to wait until the board considered the action, and our plan is to go back to FEMA. A lot, a lot of their projects have closed out. This is about a two-year-old project, as you recall, we've been at one time before. So we'll go back to FEMA and ask if they can increase their participation. Even if FEMA stays at their initial money, we do have money in reserve out of drainage funds to be able to, to make that match and make the project work.
Yes, sir. What's the turnaround time on getting response from them, sir? Is that something that's done fairly quickly?
I don't know, Ms. Chairman.
Update us.
Yes, sir. But I think, well, I mean, what we'd like, do we want to try to go ahead and issue the contract?
Absolutely.
We're not trying to wait on FEMA.
Oh, really?
We're going to move forward, but we're going to ask for FEMA, just to try to get a moment.
We, we've got the money to do it without them increasing their total.
I want to make sure I was clear about that.
All out of drainage, all out of a
How long has this project been on the table?
About a year, a year and a half. And we bid at one time, and it was like three point nine million dollars. And we had bypass lanes and all that, and what we were able to do is, through that process, we were able to talk to some contractors about some different ideas, how to reduce the cost, and how they might be able to build it without the bypass, bypassing the water. So came up with some ideas, we put it to paper, and put it out to bid, and cut our price in half.
So, real briefly, how will traffic be flowing?
So what we'll have, what we'll do, try to describe it, just describing it, we will have traffic signals on either side of it. What we're going to do first is, on the upstream side, we'll build part of the box cover. And we'll move the traffic over to that side while we tear up the, the road. And, you know, we'll have a lane closed. It'll be one-way traffic during the whole process. So what will happen is, if you're red here, these people will be going. And once the last car goes, it'll change and come the other way. So we'll have a red light there all the time.
So that would be just like the same, the same system that you had set up on a
Yeah, the bridge going back to
Crossover Ninety-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Same system. So a lot more people coming through it. Now, the other thing we did do is, we did do this precast concrete, so that we get rid of all the twenty-eight day wait periods for concrete, strength of concrete. So what happened with this is, once they get approved, they'll get all their shot drawings for their precast structures. We'll review them, they'll build those on site, and then they'll come and they'll start taking everything apart and putting it together.
Graham, let me ask you a question on that too. I saw we had safety improvements on that road to Joy. That box cover, will it be, it won't be any wider than what's already out there?
That'll be much wider.
Okay, so you'll have, when you get ready to pave it, you'll have more shoulder then that'll be on that side right there? Okay. How much will it be, I mean?
Right now, we've got about forty feet length of box cover from one side to the other side. When we're done, we're going to be a shade over seventy feet.
Okay.
So when it comes to the financing piece, we'll go ahead and prove this tonight, but if FEMA comes through, then we'll just use their funds?
Well, they're only going to, you know, they were only, as Trent said, they're only going to pay, I believe it was a little over eight hundred, eight eighty maybe, is what was approved in that grant. I mean, it's a project we got to do anyway. So, so even if they don't contribute any more money,
I understand.
But hopefully, they're going to up theirs. Again, the, the estimate it was done was like four years ago, is FEMA mitigation money. And so that, that's when they put their price in the hopper, and of course, as that time went on, materials costs significantly increased. So I'm somewhat confident they'll
Let's talk to our representatives and congressmen and whoever, senators, and say, this is one way in, one way out. We got to have some help. I mean, I know, I don't, I don't know any other, I, I know we've got the money, and we're going to find the money to fix it, because it is a safety issue. But, I mean, has anybody, Chairman, have you talked to anybody about it?
Not about this cover.
Not about our cover project, because this is a separate pot of money that, that is set. The, the only way they'd be able to fund any money towards it would be too late, would be in an earmark, which wouldn't be available till next year.
Next year sometime.
And we got to get this project finished.
Right, well, I understand.
Chair, you motion on this? Other stuff.
Yeah, we, we just got
Yeah, let's just keep asking.
Sure. So, again, whenever we put these, when we put this out for a bid, Platinum Paving was the only one who bid on it?
We had six contractors show up at the pre-construction conference. I know that a couple of others were working on prices, so I was a little surprised that they didn't turn in. But we had a good bit of interest in it, so several people picked up plans, so it wasn't, that there wasn't interest. They were just the only ones that submitted.
Okay. Another question, I, I remember years ago, when we started including a ten percent contingency. So whenever we already have that included, do the board have to sign off on that? Or is it just, since we already make the motion, it's already in there, correct?
It, it is. It's available.
It's available for them to pull.
It's available. It doesn't go, you know, some folks will build that in the contract, but we don't build it in the contract. It's a set aside, and then we have a ten percent contingency to go back to if we need it. We, we can't exceed the ten percent without coming back to you.
All right. And another question with this project, and I know it's a road project, so I know it's two million dollars. Does the NWV policy still in effect?
We have it in there.
All right, and are they?
I think they did. I have not gotten the review. I have not gotten the review from Ms. Delisa. So, um, what we do is when we get those, immediately we give those to Ms. Delisa to do the review. And normally she sends you, sends us a letter and sends a letter to you. But they, my understanding, they've done everything they could do, um, with some of their forces and with the bidding process. So, yes, sir, I, I, I mean, we, we, we even have Mr. Delisa here at the pre-construction conference and make sure everybody understands. And I, I'll be honest with you, a good quarter to half of a pre-construction conference is about, uh, how to meet the M W B requirements and what we need to do to make that happen.
Okay. Mr. Chair, can, can we, can we bring her back in? The, the only thing is, you know, um, with, with, with SPOSS, you know, um, and I know T. SPOSS will, and, and I know it's a slippery slope or whatnot. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, throughout the years, since we implemented that, that, uh, that policy, I know it's been over ten years now. I just really want to see what the numbers are of, of the companies that have participated with the amount of money that we've given out. And the only thing I'm saying is, this is a two-million-dollar project.
Two-million-dollar project, thirteen percent of it.
Right, and if, if, if they, if they can't find any type of minority participation, I don't know. It's, it's kind of...
I, I, I don't know who they used on it, and, and, you know, that, by the ordinance, it comes in a separate sealed envelope. So when we open up the bids, we give her the, the envelopes.
Right, yeah, I, I just want to get some numbers, um, and, and see, I mean, if, if we're, if we're not meeting, or even as a, a, a commission, even if we need to sit down and, and discuss, like, what, what are we trying to do with, with that particular policy? You know, is, are, are we just putting it out there, or are we trying to make sure that it's, it's an effective policy? And, you know, we might have to make some adjustments or, or see what we could do from our side to make sure that the participation is, is met. Because it's a lot of money.
I think she indicated, I think when she came before you last time, she indicated there were some things she would like to talk to you about changing, it's all about...
She did. Okay.
I think she would like to make, make the changes to the program as well.
Okay, so, yeah, Mr. Chair, if we could try to get her.
We're on it.
Thank you.
So you, you need a, a motion from us on this?
I do.
All right.
Chair and Chairwoman, motion then for the...
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, grant this project to Platinum Paving and Concrete for the highway box cover on Island's Highway for one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Motion and second, we approve the bid from Platinum?
Not one dime of.
Paving and concrete.
Wouldn't be a motion if you didn't say it.
All in favor, show of hands, please. All right, we can finally get that project on the road.
Yes, sir. We'll get that stuff out the door for it. Um, I'll try to roll through my, uh, status report. I got several things I need to talk to you about in it. Uh, in the Middle Park Fire Station, the general contractor did call for a final inspection. There's a final inspection with most of all the, uh, engineers for the building tomorrow. Uh, we've been out, we have a punch list of items that, uh, we're going to provide to, uh, the architect tomorrow to get that site, uh, fixed up. We also have Siddle Construction, uh, is the landscape contractor for this site. Uh, we had a pre-construction conference with him yesterday. Uh, we gave him notice received to start for Monday. Sometime next week or following week, they should be installing the, uh, meter for the irrigation system. Uh, and quickly following the installation of the meter, uh, they'll install the irrigation system, followed by the, uh, landscape materials.
What about the bird bath out in the front?
That is, uh, one of our comments. Yes, sir. So that, that was one of the things we talked about. So they had a big bird bath, and they had some real issues, uh, with the striping, uh, where they striped it prematurely with thermoplastic. We told them they had to come back and mill that, and they came back and milled that. While they were there, they were supposed to fix the bird baths, and what they ended up doing was trying to put a patch in to fix the bird bath, and it didn't work. All they really did was move the bird bath. So, uh, one of our comments back to them is they've got to fix the asphalt. Uh, right now, we have asphalt with a bunch of little patches, and, you know, we want them to mill out and fix and have a quality product at the end of the day. So, uh, we're not, we're withholding money on the, uh, construction contract for the asphalt.
Because actually, a patch in that new asphalt and the weight of those trucks, and it's not going to work.
I, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with you. So that, that is, uh... Here, mind, I, I won't, won't... We have been standing on our head about that, and I apologize if it's that way. Clodley Lane Water System is, uh, pretty close to done. Um, all the, uh, pressure tests are done. Uh, we have meters. Well, we don't have them in our possession yet, and we should be getting them in our possession next day or two. Uh, we're coordinating Clinton to put the meters away until we're ready to install the meters, uh, for the citizens. So, uh, probably within the next week, we'll be able to turn that project, uh, over to the county to be able to utilize and start connecting customers to it.
Yeah, I have a question on that, Trent. Uh, I rode down there the other day, um, and, you know, I know that Mr. Golin on the other side of the canal, you know, he was the one that was, you know, that we were really, um, trying to help. I mean, he, but from, what's that, Westfield to across, uh, uh, that's Westfield Road, right there across on the park. Okay, from there to across the canal where Mr. Golin lived, there's, uh, very little development. But we got, um, water lines, you know, I guess at every property line for, for, for the future. And I was just kind of concerned of vandals or, you know, maybe people going there once we turn it on and, you know, getting water, whatever. And I, I know that on those shut-off valves, you could put like a little silver bullet or something in there, but that don't stop some vandals from cutting that tubing and water just run like crazy down there. I, I know that we were going to bury a line and get it to Fred across the canal, but now we got, looks like at every property line, about ten of them going down there for future use, which, um...
Let me go ahead and get with the contractor, and what we probably need to do is go ahead and bury them and just put the corporation stop in a meter box.
Bear in mind that...
Yeah, that way they're, they're there, we can get to them and find them later on.
I, I think that's what we need to do, because right now it's just a, it's a board and it's tied around it, it's, it's exposed. And, um, I just, that's the first thing I thought. You know, they, they do it up here all the time in these subdivisions, but, you know, it's pretty...
Yes, sir. Usually, they're coming back pretty quick to put a meter on.
They're coming back quick, and it's not, um...
Yeah, that's, you're, you're exactly right.
In an area that's just isolated, you know, that's...
I think the meters were put in today.
On all of those, uh...
When they, they're, the meters are, they might, they might have, because Keith and Clinton and, uh, guys from Sean's office were coordinating that this afternoon. So I wasn't going to commit to it that it was done.
Yeah, I think, I think they're in, but I'm like Commissar Gillard. I mean, when we rode down there, you know, I was under the impression we were going from point A to point B, because nobody else had asked for water.
Right.
So when you get down there, you see every lot.
Has a meter.
And, I mean, you know, you, next thing you know, somebody will be, will move a, a trailer in there or build a house in there. Uh, we need to make sure, I mean, the, the meters are important, but they're the easiest things to, uh, to turn on and off. And I, I don't know why we didn't just stub them up and, um, and cap them and then let whoever wants to come in there, um...
We can, we can go back and make sure that's...
Yeah.
There's some of them a long ways up in there, too. One of them was sixty feet off of that.
Yeah, and one, a couple of them are that way because of where the line is in the right-of-way and how the property lines work. Yes, sir.
Let, let's look at trying to, you know...
I can do that.
Protect that a little bit.
That won't be a problem. I can make that happen.
Okay.
I appreciate y'all taking care of that project for me.
I know, I, I know you do, yeah.
Somebody had to do it, how about that?
All right, so...
All right, I'm going to skip down to the sidewalk to Elm Street in Windhaven. The rain's kind of got them held up a little bit. They should get, be getting back out there, getting on that. So I think we had a good conversation about that yesterday. So they're kind of moving around on that, um, so that project's moving forward. The next thing on the list is, uh, Water System West of the Railroad. Just for everybody's information, I put a little map out on everybody's desk. This map shows you an indication of where we stand as far as easements go. Uh, it's color-coded for, uh, property owners that want to be paid for their, um, land. There are some that have not signed, and there is one that we cannot find. All the leads we've had have turned up negative. Now, uh, the ones that want to be paid, uh, there's a couple, there's six pieces that are in the, what I call the critical zone. Uh, the critical zone for me would be from our connection point, where they're storing all the asphalt on the other side of Macintosh Mountain. That's where our line ends. We got to start there, and I have to get at least to Macintosh Lake Road so I can cross and go from there. So I got six in that little section that I need to take care of. One just, Cede's going to sign it. We've, uh, Mr. Mike Henderson. Um, and we've made concessions because he wanted us to make sure we left him a Florence Service, uh, stub out. And so we, we added the stub outs that he asked for, but we haven't received the signed easement from him. Uh, the, there are a couple that are right at the very beginning, uh, would like to be paid for theirs. And then we have one that basically slammed the door, said he wasn't going to pay, wasn't going to give it. So, um, what we'd like to be able to do is let you guys look at where we are. Um, at the June meeting, we need to kind of talk about it again and talk about our actions. We'll have, uh, values presented for you for the pieces that we need, and whatever actions that we may need to take to get the remaining parcels. And in particular, the six critical, the six critical parcels.
How about the one that says absolutely no? What do you do?
Well, you know, you, you have, one of the things I'm trying to do, uh, and one of the things that D O T told us was we had to prove that we could not get the easements. So, uh, I am asking if we can get special permission from D O T to go out in the right-of-way and back over and then back out of the right-of-way across the front of that parcel. Now, the only leg I really have to stand on to ask that, it's in the section where Macintosh Mountain is, and you got the little side road, and it's on the other side of that little side road. So it's not like it's in the normal right-of-way, so I'm much further away than normal. So I'm going to ask, um, I am, uh... My outlook on getting a positive response is not good. So, you know, that may lead to some sort of eminent domain or, you know, see what other options we may have.
Trent, let's go down and look at that tomorrow.
Okay. I, I can't, I can't tomorrow, but I can go first part next week with you.
Yeah, we'll go Monday then.
Okay. So I'll give you a shot tomorrow. We'll set up a time.
Got to get quick, get through early Monday, though.
Hold on a minute. You don't want to start at six o'clock at night? So you don't want to start at six o'clock at night?
Have we ever had to use eminent domain in any of our water projects?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll give you a shot. I'll give you a shot.
We have, we have, we have not.
We have not. I hate to see us have to do that, but, you know, I guess that's the only recourse we have, the only recourse we have, but we exhaust every other opportunity, other option to convince that out.
Now, I, I don't want to go that route, but, you know, it's, my options are limited there.
I understand.
The EMS building, uh, is, we're pretty much club coming to the end with the EMS building admin, uh, plans. We've been back and forth a little bit coordinating with the architect and the other engineers, structural, H V A C guys, uh, this past week. And I think we kind of came to a final set this week, so you should be looking to have final set of plans. And for Mr. Brown telling you, it's time for us to go to bid for that project. Working on the pickleball, uh, plans. Look back at the Jones Creek. Let us know if you have any questions. That we will be moving forward on that. Limer Road repairs, the, uh, decelerating that we were waiting on. Uh, we called trying to figure out the status and rest that along, and they had a couple of comments. Uh, Danielle was fixing those this week, so hopefully that should be turned back in tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get a, a positive to move forward tomorrow. The last thing we need to talk about is the, um, additional EMIC. I need to go ahead and turn in for that really soon, like probably before our next meeting. Now, um, everybody has a list of roadways. I think they emailed this out last month as well, just kind of look at it. And these were just suggestions. A lot of this came off of the roadway rating system, um, that we did several years ago. Um, I tried to make sure that I, I got the worst ones and thought, thought about the ones that have developed since, um, we did the work. Now, we, I've given you way more than we have money to do. So I'm not expecting to say, hey, let's do all of these. We're basically going to get five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents with no match.
Need to have some bake sales, my buddy.
Need to have some bake sales.
How much was it?
Five twenty-nine.
Five twenty-nine. Yes, sir. So, you know, what I'd like to be able to do is put one or two of these on there, um, for you guys, and then go ahead and turn that in and at least tie up the money. Now, if it comes to something that you guys say, okay, all of a sudden, hey, let's do this route, we can go ahead and, uh, switch out. It's pretty easy to switch your project with Department of Transportation with these things, as long as it is a qualifying project. So, well, I just need you guys to tell me kind of what your thoughts are. Now, before we do that, there are two things that are not on here that, uh, Mr. Brown, one thing Mr. Brown told me, and, um, one that I, that was not on here that you didn't get last month was Live Oak Drive. Talked to Commissioner Frazier yesterday. Um, now, I put, we, we kind of calculated, uh, one point six million dollars to do that section of, uh, Live Oak Drive that starts at one ninety-six and goes down to... Amanda Lane? Amanda Lane. I was trying to say Carl Dykes's old house, what's the name of that road right there. So what we ended up doing was, uh, I coordinated with, uh, Paul Simon, because he just recently did, uh, a good section of the road right through there. We got what their prices were, what their, uh, we kind of came up with a unit price per length of road, applied a little bit of a growth rate to it, and for the entire length of that section, it's one point six million dollars. Now, um, part of that's in the city, because a really small portion of it is totally within the city. It's just down there next to Amanda Lane, and their portion of it would be about... I lost it. There it is. About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the one point six million dollars, because it's really only about in front of about three and a half ounces.
So you got one point five to come up with.
So, and, and, and before we did the whole entire redishing, Commissioner Thresh had a portion of that as well.
I did.
Yeah. Yeah, so my, my suggestion would be, you know, if, if we don't have enough money to do that, if we want to do a portion of it, you know, maybe do the portion from...
It's really bad.
Highway to Hollywood Drive or try to do a little something.
Is this like milling and what is this to do?
Well, actually, what this does is this fixes all the drainage, gets the curb and gutter and the sidewalks like the city requirements, just like what they did down the street on Amanda Lane and Kelly Drive.
We have all the right-of-way there?
Yes, ma'am, we have right-of-way there.
No, it seems to be narrow.
And that's a safety issue as well.
It is. Oh, yeah, especially those houses, yeah, when you first get on it, you got all the subsidized housing on the right, and they've got driveway, driveway.
Right on top of each other.
Right on top of each other, and they're way out on, close to the road.
Help me rationalize, y'all. I know the city receives EMIC funds, too. And I know that, um, Mayor Lieutenant Vicki Nelson called about participating in some project.
It was this one.
Was it this one?
Yes, sir.
He wanted the Olive Street.
Oh, and Olive.
Olive.
He had several on there, didn't she?
Want to do more on Olive?
Small portion of this, those in the city, most of this is in the county, is that what I heard?
With this particular project.
This is a little island of the county inside the city.
Yeah, well, really, from, um, from Amanda Lane to about Trinity Church, which is, is in the city. That's where...
It's in the city. That's where the city starts, right at Trinity.
Right, and, and, you remember, I guess that was years back, you remember the city tried to annex that particular area? Wasn't that Live Oak and another portion?
I thought it was Live Oak Church.
I think it was Live Oak Church that they tried to...
In, in that area, I'm almost certain it was over there, and because it's, it's, it's really weird. That's the only portion that's still county.
It's several little islands in that area.
Right, so I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was both of those areas. Right, Mr. Brown? If I'm not mistaken? And all I know is they put up for a vote for the citizens and they voted it down.
They voted it down.
So it's, they didn't want to be in the city, so... Obviously...
All that is rental property, pretty much. Live Oak Drive, Live Oak Church is...
No, I mean, Live Oak still goes down to, you know, what is that? Bellmore? Biltmore? Bellmore?
Yeah, Live Oak.
And see, that's, that's the thing, the city has already invested heavily on, on that particular area. And then whenever you look at it, and then the portion with the ci, with us is untouched.
So when I look at your list here, excuse me, you rank it in, in what order?
Not necessarily. Most of these roads, with the exception of Live Oak Drive and Baker and Tyson, were high-ranking roads for our roadway evaluation system we did several years ago. So they, these are all on the top of that list. Baker and Tyson, Commissioner Walden had asked me to pull some numbers together on those roads a couple of months ago.
Yeah, Baker Bill is going to be collaboration with, hopefully with the city of Flemington. And, but Tyson, I mean, right now, it looks like an issue with getting even easements down through there. So that ought to be able to do nothing with it. I, I think you, I think you could possibly look at it, but I also think, Trent, there'd be another alternative to get that water in there too.
Okay.
I mean, that's why I want to look at it, because you may have to punch under the road there to get across to, you know, to the... Where the car locks at, you may be, that may be an alternative.
Just get across right there.
And then go across, but we'll, we'll look at it. I don't...
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
Don't, don't I recall doing a reading recently that there are some additional L-MIG funds?
That's what, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this is. That's what this is, because I think you already did the other L-MIG.
Yeah, we've already, we've already applied for other...
So the addition is the five twenty-nine?
This five twenty-nine, zero match on this.
I was trying to...
Now, the other thing that I want to throw out there, Mr. Brown asked me to, to talk about JV Road because there's a short portion of JV Road, and we have a local developer that is going to contribute. Instead of having to do some trees and some other things on JV Road, he's going to contribute. So we may want to consider putting some money on JV Road on that list as well.
We're actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, actually Live Oak Church Road.
Live Oak Church?
Yeah, yeah, because there's another development that is going to come out of Live Oak Church Road too.
Oh, Reuben Wells.
Yeah, Reuben, JV Route.
Reuben Wells would be the interest.
So if we even considered...
And I think I got Wells in regular L-MIG. I think, I think...
Yeah, Reuben, Reuben's in pretty good shape. We just did that expansion project on the, on the curb and gutter.
We could take it to Live Oak Church and put the possibly sidewalks.
Maybe do sidewalks or at least do some pavement extension in there because that road's kind of tearing up.
I mean, it's, it's potholes, everything, you know.
They're not even that bad a shape, Live Oak Church Road. Now, now we moved to Church Road.
Oh, my bad.
I don't know. I can imagine that one getting confused.
Trees, Live Oak Church Road.
It gets confusing.
Live Oak Drive, if, this is for y'all to consider, would require some, some brother and sisterhood participation?
He's got all the brotherhood.
You know, and, and that's the thing, you know, I, I do have, you know, some extra funding. And, and I, I need to get in contact with Councilman Nelson again as well. But I, I just know that we've had discussions about, about that particular road and doing a collaboration with the city and the county for a couple of years now. And the city just moved forward without us, and, you know, they've done their part, and I'm...
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's all they did.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, that's, that's kind of the section.
Oh, no, no, they, they, they invested, I know, a couple of million over there.
Oh, yeah.
Over there, Live Oak.
To the Kelly? Oh, yeah.
One point five.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One point five, right?
Yeah, yeah, I know where you're coming from.
So how we came up with our number, to try to get the number quickly, is we, we had a copy of their plans. And so what, I contacted Simon, the engineer, and I got their total price. We looked at their total job and the total center line. And I used his price per foot center line and applied it to the price per foot for Live Oak Drive. Added a little bit of escalation to it just to be sure, and that's how we came up with this number.
How'd you come up with the number on Bakentown Road?
Bakentown Road, same way. I used center line and I looked at kind of what it cost us to do Bill Carter Road and applied generic numbers just the same way.
So Bakentown Road stayed the same width?
Bakentown stands same. Yeah, Bakentown is, is, it's starting to have some issues. If we don't do something on it soon, it's going...
It's got some issues already.
It's, it's going to have some problems. And it is ours, it's not Midway's.
Right.
I mean, I thought for a while, that's Midway's. Midway needs to go ahead and put in something for this. And I looked at the map, I was like, oh, yeah, that's really county.
So commissioners, we got five twenty-nine.
Well, let me ask a question on that. Mr. Chairman didn't, I mean, the L-MIG, is, is that something that we tried the best we can to split it evenly? Or do, or is it just to certain districts?
We've tried to move it around, and we tried to address transperquisition on what roads are the neediest. So a combination of those things. I know we did a lot on Bill Carter and Louis Fraser, no doubt about that.
Well, yeah, well, the reason I asked that, because I, I think, I remember last year, it might have been the year before, that, that I think there was some kind, some discussion of a split. And I think whatever my portion was, I, I said y'all could have it because, you know, because based on need. And I remember when we talked with Trent about going and doing the evaluation, that we were trying to rate the roads for the purpose of trying to get them, you know, that the one that's number one wouldn't be number one for the next hundred years. That, that we, that's what we were trying to do. But I think we did, there was a time when, I think it was just dirt road districts or something like that, or whatever it was. But I don't, you know, just looking at this, and then you know, and I got, I don't have any unincorporated areas in, in my district. And all, all I got is municipalities. So if we were going to split it, someone could have mine, or if we wanted to do whatever we can with the, the half a million, you know, to the worst road, or somebody got a project that's near and dear to them or whatever. I just think that, you know, it ain't, it ain't really enough to be split in seven ways, that's for sure.
No, it's not.
Mr. Brown, does this, if we split this money or divvy it up whichever way, does it have to be spent right of way? Quick.
So, so, you know, it's a separate appropriation, you know, all the thing, unless Trent's seen something different. I haven't even seen that commented. The L-MIG money you can carry over. Three years. Three years, but I haven't seen a ruling on this money. We would need to go back and check to be sure. Yeah, and if I remember the letter right, it doesn't address it. It basically said that the L-MIG rules and qualifications applied, but there was no match. So I'm not sure that they directly addressed it, but we may have the three years, but we can find out.
So you would think of letting, letting it accumulate?
Right. Yeah, if we do, if we do split it up evenly or whatever, then we could then accumulate. That'd be about seventy-five, five hundred, roughly, and seventy-five thousand, but it might accumulate to eighty. But it, but then, you know, that you almost can get a sidewalk somewhere, leading to something possible, or striping.
I'm just concerned...
Or if Commissioner Gilliard's wanting to do those sidewalks in Olive, you know, that may, could help him with that.
Well, you, you know, I was just thinking about the Live Oak, and I think it was added to the list, and it wasn't, I don't think it's one of the ones that was on the road evaluation. But I, I, we were doing some work over there, had to meet Clinton over there. And I figured, you know, I'll meet him over there about eight thirty. I figured school was in, but I don't know what time schools start. It was, I think, whenever, whenever the buses, buses get there, you know, nine thirty, ten o'clock. But it was, it was a bunch of kids out there around Hollywood, Pine Street, and Live Oak. I'm talking about, it looked like it was about sixty of them waiting on, waiting on buses. You know, so, and, you know, so that mean that they don't drive, so it's a lot of pedestrian traffic over there. And if we tied in from Amanda Lane up to one ninety-six, you know, it, it'd be a good project. And, I mean, because Clinton get calls on it. You know, they'll call us, and I say that's in the county, and, you know, so we, we try to work, you know, try to help it for him to have to come from way down there. And we right down the street, so we kind of do it. But it would be a good project to tag on to what the city has already done. Because the, the city did that. If you go to the three-way at Glen Bryant and Pylton, that's all, that's curb and gutter. Then you get to where Kelly Drive goes down toward Barry McCaffrey, Happy Acres Trailer Park. But they started from right there at Kelly, and they went all the way around. And they all the way around now, past Bellmore, Amanda Lane. And they came short of what Trinity Church is, which is, that's where the city limits stops. And then you go out toward one ninety-six. But, I mean, you, that's, that's one point six million to do the, to do the remainder of that.
And yes, sure, like I said, that's a quick guess, a quick estimate on the...
Well, if, if, I mean, if from Pylton, well, from, yeah, from, from where the city started to where they ended.
If that's one point five, that's about right.
Five, so that's probably about right. But it's, but it's a lot of school-aged kids out there.
So let's ask the commissioners for those areas to get together, and let's make that decision.
So why don't I do this? I, I need to go ahead and turn in.
What do you?
Why don't I, why don't I put Live Oak Drive on there? Because I can always put more on there than we're going to get. I can put Live Oak Drive on there as our target roadway, and that'll more than cover the five hundred thousand. And if you decide you want to do something, I can always go back and submit another project report and get permission to switch if we need to.
We get the five hundred on there, we'd only need one point one.
Right, and, and, sir, Trent, let me ask you a question. I, I know back in the past, so you might remember as well, I don't know if the laws have changed, but I remember it was like municipalities and counties who didn't apply for their L-MIG, that the money went back into the bank. It's still that...
We get it. Sometimes, we have gotten it several times.
Right, okay, that, that's what I was saying, so...
Remember years ago when we were doing a bunch of extra striping jobs?
Right.
That's where the money was coming from.
That was extra money.
They take the extra money under, under their statute or under their procedure. They take it, what's left over, doesn't go back into, well, I guess you could call them L-MIG monies, but they, they move over into the safety, into safety funds. They're, they're transported into safety funds, and so then you get a safety qualifying project.
Okay, right.
Some of that also, Joey, because your, your cities had, of course, they had the sales tax, but they had more traffic in the, in those areas, more pedestrians. But like Ricade, is that a, is that road been resurfaced out there off of, uh?
It's not.
No, Ricade had, Ricade and Debbie, that part of Debbie.
Well, is it a, is it a clay base?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I'm just asking because that will make a difference, because they'll mill it, won't they, and then go back? When they, when they do the L-MIG, I mean, if you get that project, what exactly will they do? Will they go in there and say, okay, we need to mill this out and go back on, on top of it? And then they'll be, they'll be in the dirt, they won't be in the, in the rock.
So, okay, let me, what we do is we say this is going to cost us X amount of dollars. They give us the money. Liberty County is responsible for the design and the construction of whatever improvements are there. So like if we do a road that's sand clay based or soil cement based, that has this problematic... When we do our design, before we put it out for bid, we take into consideration what's there and what kind of base we've got.
We'll have to core it.
We'll have to core. There's a lot of times we core. I don't always, you know, give out, hey, we did the coring on this roadway. Or like when we did Bill Carter Road, we do cores. We also do full-depth reclamation. We need the studies to figure out how much cement to put out. And we, we jump through a lot of hoops to make sure we got the right thing.
If I had to guess, I would say those were private streets when it was built.
I think all of them are clay over there because of Marianne, Debbie, and, and Ricade. I think all that's, I think all that's clay.
That's probably, of course, I mean, it was, you know, it is a little high in there in some areas. I'm just saying, if we got, you know, that's going, that'll change a contractor's mind in a hurry out there. What makes it one point five million is likely to be two point six million.
You're absolutely right.
So, Commissioner Fraser, that's, that's your district now?
Absolutely, the whole thing. Commissioner Thref gave that to me.
Hey, if Commissioner Thref was like...
It wasn't that bad.
If Commissioner Thref was like I was, she would have paved it.
Exactly, it did give it to me, right?
You, you don't have a problem with us helping you with it?
Absolutely not. No, absolutely. Listen, hey, you all are welcome in my district anytime y'all want. Any, any, any rules, drainages, y'all see any issues with, feel free to let me know.
As soon as you do this, Marion's district should get it.
All right, we'll start with Live Oak.
Okay, I'll put Live Oak on the application. First part of next week, Chairman, I'll bring over all the documents for you to sign.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's a good move.
Yes, I do too.
Let the plan comes together.
Hey, but Commissioner Thref, as you recall, right up there by those apartments, that was the, the first speed hump. Now, they all over town, and that wasn't in the county. That's, I mean, it was in the county. It still is in the county, but it's a, it's a speed hump up there.
Yeah, I had it installed.
Yeah, I remember that years ago, fifteen years ago. It's flat as a pancake now. Thank you, Mr. Long.
Yes, sir, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Long? I got one more for you.
Okay.
Check the bridge at Peacock and Louis Fraser.
Okay.
Coming toward Bill Carter.
Okay.
It's dropping pretty good if you like it.
Okay, on the approach side?
Yes.
Okay, I'll drive home that way tonight.
If you're going that way, you won't feel it going that way, but coming...
Coming back?
Bill Carter.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had a better new bridge?
No.
No? I got the wrong one?
Not on Louis Fraser. That's the one that they were supposed to be replacing.
Yeah, they're going to replace the Louis Fraser Road Bridge over Peacock Canal.
I don't know where it's at with the state, but just take a look at it.
Well, they are in right-of-way acquisition phase now, so the, the construction of that will be sooner than later. So then the pain of the road closure will be for a little while.
And what was your final decision on the grass and on Bill Carter?
We've asked them to come back out and fix it again.
So how much more time are we going to?
Well, we're holding a little bit of money on them. If I need to get somebody else to come out there and fix it, I'll get somebody else to come out and fix it. But we, we...
All right.
I'll get his attention again tomorrow. I hadn't gotten his attention the last couple of weeks because I've been out of town.
Then it was nice to award the contract to him.
Yes, sir. All right, I got it. Thanks, sir.
Ordinance Fire Protection, this is the voting item?
Yes, it is.
Action item?
To put in place exactly what you reviewed last time, and I didn't have any comments back. It's, it's been cleaned up and made pretty for you. I can't say I take credit for that. The secretary did that, but, but yes, sir, somebody did. Somebody other than me did. That's correct.
Need a motion on that?
I need a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the fire protection and prevention plan as presented for Liberty County, the first and the original.
Motion to second, we approve the fire protection plan?
I was going to second, but I didn't know when he was finished with the motion.
Further discussion, all in favor, show hands, please. Made history.
Thank you.
He scheduled update permits and inspections. So a citizen mentioned to me in random conversation that we should do this.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we made a few tweaks on it, and then that was... Okay, um, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we made a few tweaks on it and then that was uh, some decrease in some prices, uh, reflect some hours. Uh, and we did note it on the last page, uh, Commissioner Stevenson had talked about it, and I think it's still in our ordinance, but we talked about uh, item miscellaneous permits on number eight. Building without a building permit, double the type of construction permit, so if you are caught building a facility. Um, you will pay double that permit once you are caught, and you may be taken to magistrate court, so we did put that in there.
Thank you, that sounds good.
Need a motion, Mr. Chair?
Need a motion?
Mr. Chair, um, I, I have the distinct honor and privilege to, to uh, make the motion that, that we move forward on the building, construction and development fees as presented.
Question a second, this will be.
I'd like to have the honor, just second.
Too late, too late.
So be effective when, sir.
July one.
July one, April July one. Any further?
Right side guy.
All in favor, show hands, please. Comparisons, once again, moving in the right direction, that we will get some help with these projects that are going.
Mr. Brown, just one question, this will kind of in the long run increase our revenue, slightly, not much, but.
I, I started to make that note, just kind of let it go, when Ms. Richson was going over that, we did anticipate some revenue, if you look back on that from last year, this coming in, so we've kind of done that projection, yes, sir.
But in the revenue, we're also looking at another employee, right?
In, in expenditure side, expenditure side, looking at employees. Well. Covered the cost of new employee.
Can we go ahead and put this on our website, sir, for public?
Uh, sure, yeah, yeah, we'll be spinning that up, so we can do that, along with a note on the fire prevention code.
Please.
Get notes out to the builders as well.
And, and to the builders, yeah, whi- which is, that's a good point.
That's what I was thinking, maybe if you're there. Date fund, Frazier Counseling Center.
Yes, this is the same one you talked about last time, and wanted to get that out, so you had a chance to see the full packet of information on it. It is a continuation of their counseling program, does qualify for the date funds and their request, and is what is available, is five thousand dollars to be distributed at this point.
Chairman, if you'll entertain a motion, I'd like to make it on that.
I will.
Second.
Motion, we proceed with the fund.
Second.
Question a second, we approve the date form request from Frazier Center, who has been good stewards of those funds for several years now. Drug and alcohol abuse, any further discussion? All in favor, show hands, please, about all the amount is approved for the Frazier Counseling Center. Agreement, Georgia Department of Corrections.
It's that time again to consider renewal of your um, two inmate work gangs, coming out of Smith State Prison, in fact, uh, one helped solid waste and the other helped recreation department. They do provide um, an average, I'd say, of about four folks a day on both of those crews, uh, with a guard, we have to provide the transportation. So this is a consideration to, to keep those in effect, I can tell you, they do, it, it is a very good deal for, for what they do, for weed eating and cleaning and things like that, that we'd have to consider personnel, full load personnel for, so they do do a good job there. Uh, the total cost for both of those is ninety-eight thousand, six thirty-six, and this is carried in your budget for next year, proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we approve the agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections.
Which, second, we approve the Georgia Department of Corrections, uh, contract, work title agreement, ninety-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars, any further discussion? All in favor, show hands, please, contract is approved. Agreement Office Three Sixty-Five, renewal?
Yes, sir, Mrs. Stanley and I talked about that, it's not actually a contract that's required, I mean, it's a renewal, it's already budgeted for next year, so there's no action needed on that item, not.
No action needed?
No, sure.
Move on to your report then, sir.
Uh, we are, and the first thing, if Michael can queue that up, I laid at your desk, we went through the mandatory meetings with the cities to try to renew, what is gonna try to be renewed on the uh, November ballot, which is T-Splash, it'll actually be called T-Splash Two Thousand Twenty-four, the documents that you see. We've engaged counsel for that, counsel has produced already a, a draft of a memorandum of agreement between the parties. You may remember that the T-Splash this time will be different, uh, it can be, if you have an IGA in place before the referendum's called, it can be a six-year tax instead of a five-year tax. It also does not have a sunset on it, so while you may look at an estimate that we're gonna look at here, and you're looking at on your sheet, you can continue to collect, just like the splash does, they made it exactly like splash model, is exactly what it is. So we met with the cities, through the mandatory agreements we had to have with them, um, with the chairman and, and the mayors there, they basically looked at a list of projects that were met the thirty percent criteria that's required under the state transportation plan. And as you can see, those projects actually are proposed at about thirty-two point six four percent. Of, of note, because it would be a six-year tax, as opposed to this tax that you've got, that's projected to collect about somewhere between sixty-two and sixty-four, you're looking at, at least, we think, a seventy-six million dollar uh, portion of that uh, coming out, or basically being received for that. What we did on that sheet that you're looking at also, is in the bottom section, same format that you're used to seeing on your reports, you would see the allocated portions that would go to each city and, and the county. These are based on the LCPC split that has, that has occurred in the last T-Splash, are basically not changing anything. And for yours on, on the end down there, we use the same percentages, not that you, i- if it passes, not that you're bound by whatever you do with your funds and how you split it, but we just, for simplicity's sake, use the same percentages that the current T-Splash has in it. And as you can see, those are, are not exactly equal, I was trying to um, remember in the end of that day, how y'all came to those percentages, and I can't remember that. But uh, but that's, you know, obviously not something that you've got to worry about tonight, I think the first emphasis is to try to get the T-Splash passed, and, and then you'll have an opportunity to come back and talk about how you want to split those funds out, you know, on the bottom. Yes, sir.
Uh, just got a couple of questions on those, certain places here, how did y'all come up with the two million for the interstate paper road?
That's the amount that's, that's different, this, um, you've got a little over a million, I think a million and a half in the current T-Splash, the project's supposed to cost three point five, so this is the extra money that's needed to do that.
So, when we initially started this project, we had to the table, if you remember, it was the Industrial Authority, City of Riceburg. And the county. So, this project look like it, it's going in a direction that would be one hundred percent funded to T-Splash, I mean, this amount being, and the other amount to the regular.
That, that's right, that's right, this amount's projected to be done now, I mean, I, when you, when you think about it, I don't think any, I think that's the rea- I know that's the reason it's carried, everybody realizes it needs to be an upfront project, one that everybody participates in, pretty much, um, through giving up a share of funds, and I mean, it's, this has got to be done.
You said everybody participates in it, so how about the, when, when it was all started in the beginning, it was an agreement with Interstate Paper.
That's correct.
And of course, that all changed through time, now, everybody's selling and, and buying and do something different. So, I think it's time that we say, look here, folks, the road starts here and it ends down there, we need to have a discussion with those people. You know, we want their business and they're down there, and uh, I just think that we need to have some type of a, uh, you know, conversation with them, whoever wants to do it, whether it's you or the chairman, or.
We, we've met with them, Commissioner Walden.
In that area, but.
Yes, sir, we met with them a couple of times over the last two years and.
The net, the new one, though, the one that's just taken over, Commissioner Jones, who is, who's got it now?
It's DS Smith at the moment, but it's up for sale again, so we in the process of changing owners again.
So, that's what I'm saying, we, everybody finds out that it's a, you know, they ain't got to worry about the road, the log trucks come in and out, so we need to.
I agree, I mean, I agree, we, 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 we go down and meet with them and talk to them again, I think it's probably the best thing to do is go ahead and budget it in here, and if we're able to get some funds, then that money can be used on one of y'all's projects or recoup.
I totally agree.
We're gonna, I mean, it's a county road, so we're gonna have to.
I just think that if you don't, I mean, on both sides of the road, after you get past a few trailers, there's timberland, some of it they own. The next thing we're gonna be looking at is possibly paving roads in, you know, that warehouses got, or whoever. I mean, if there's homes in there, we're gonna wind up with the same thing, so, you know, let's, let's see if we can talk to them, if they don't want to pay up, I mean.
We certainly can.
It's our obligation, but I think that the easiest thing to do is just have a sit-down with them, let them know.
We can go back to them again.
It was paved seven, it's nearly eight years ago, wasn't it?
No, as long as, longer than that.
It was some patching.
Yeah, pa- some patchwork was done.
Right.
Yeah, it, it never has, it never has really had a reclamation or anything on it, it's got sand clay base and stuff.
It would've been done.
No questions asked.
Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Question, Mr. Brown, um, the, I guess, mandatory projects that are listed here, just looking through them, and I only identify one that I can clearly see that's uh, in the fourth district. How did we go about, I guess, selecting these projects, um, we, I guess, are part of the process, I just missed out on some.
No, sir, and that's the reason before you tonight, is that what we did is we looked at the roads that had to be done in the county, and a perfect, for instance, is that is Bacon Town Road, I mean, that's, we gotta have it to get to the shop. We knew that trying to carry a million dollars, which would've had to come out, if it's not on the top of this list, it had to come out of y'all's districts, or whoever the commissioner is down there, or whatever, but it, it just, it, it didn't, it, it needed to be, the cost was such, it needed to be atop, so we, we took those heavy hitter projects we knew of, that no one commissioner needed to carry. The other one is um, like Rogers Pasture Road, I mean, it's, it's tearing apart, and we're gonna have to go in there and do something, Clinton's very worried about that. The two choices on that, you can fund it through T-Splash, or you could pass it on through the solid waste fee, and just kind of thought it'd be better for visitors and those to help pay for, for that road, instead of the citizens paying for it through solid waste. So that's the reason, but um, and, and that's the reason you see all these are, you know, those are even some lower-cost projects, but um, that's how they, we took the heavy projects, we knew that one commissioner couldn't bear to source up.
And I guess another um, point that I'd like to make, the seventy-six thousand, I guess, the proposed distribution versus what we are getting um, allotted to us for, as individual districts. And I think we've had that discussion before that, um, and I noticed that it is much more from T-Splash, one debt we are getting per district, but I thought that we had spoke about putting more toward each individual district for the individual commissioners also. Like I said, seventy-six thousand versus, I mean, thirty-five thousand divided by seven, um. We can spend a lot of money on, especially District Four, dirt roads in particular, I mean, that's really a drop in the bucket. And um, when I tell people that we don't have the money, we don't have the money, um, especially with the dirt roads that want to be paved, and I tell them we don't have the money, I mean, and they look at me crazy. You know, but then we see seventy-six thousand dollars from T-Splash to projects and mostly roads, but then I gotta tell folks at some point that I don't have enough money to pay their road.
You mean million, you mean million dollars?
Yeah, no, seventy-six million up here for the total expenditure, and where we're just getting uh, what? Divided by seven to thirty-five thousand, um, like I said, in these dirt roads, I could probably spend that overnight, you know, if I had to just uh, devote just to dirt roads, but then we are looking for a collection of seventy-six thousand. And seventy-six million, I'm sorry, that makes more sense, but when I tell them I don't have money for their dirt road, their dirt road, then we see that seventy-six million dollar number, and it's hard for me to sell.
I understand, I'm, I'm, again, I, I just, you know, we took the projections, took the heavy-hit projects, I mean, so the ones that actually, and I've actually, I've got another sheet, it shows the ones up top that'll come to the county, so to speak.
And I understand that part too, um.
Like Islands Highway, I mean, that's, you know, that's, I think, probably borders a couple of y'all's districts, but it's definitely in need of an overlay and some improvement, and it's a million and a half, so. You know, I, I guess, in one, in one sense, that's coming to your district, I mean, that's, you know, it's a, I, I know exactly what you're saying, I'm not taking away from what you're saying at all. The, the stuff inside James Brown Park, that tearing up, um, but, but in essence, they are, you know, there's, there, there, there are many of them that are in the districts here, but uh.
But, but al- also, uh, Mr. Brown, the, these projects up at the top, this is a collective of, of not just county projects, but all the municipalities.
They are.
With a participation, correct?
They are.
And, and we have to do that to make sure that the, the uh, that it passes, or that, that is legal, correct?
Yeah, if they don't, I mean, you can, you can, you can do, the commission could, and that it passes mainly, cause, cause you could, you could call the tax without any city involved, well, you have to have the meeting, but you don't have an intergovernmental agreement. Well, if you don't have an intergovernmental agreement with at least the City of Hinesville by themselves, or a combination.
Right.
Then the tax is gonna be for five years and not six years.
And, and, and the only ones that, that will receive it will be the county and the cities that sign off, correct?
No, they would, they, they also, they're called absentee municipalities, so even though they wouldn't sign, they would still get a share, they'd get it based on the number of road miles with a ratio to census count.
Okay.
That's not confusing enough, but it's, yeah, that's how it would be broken, but they would still get a share.
Okay.
Yeah, even without the IGA.
Right.
You guys have to also remember, some of these cities don't have a city tax.
Right.
They don't do anything except for what we're funding them, I mean, I know Flemington don't have a city tax, Midway, do they have a city tax?
No, they don't.
Only one town.
We're doing everything we can, but it's time, you know, just like we mentioned before about the, the paper company, we're doing what we can, but you know, there's times when we got to say, we need it in our area where our citizens are driving, instead of uh, somebody from Hazelhurst with eighty thousand pounds of logs on it. I mean, I know it's important to people at the mill, I mean, uh, we got a man sitting in here and, and another one on the other end that retired, but it's still.
You just sort of overlook me?
You didn't retire.
Well, you even worked in, I don't know where, I didn't even know you had a job.
I, I'll tell you too, that the, uh.
I'm just saying, really, that is something that we need to be, you know, I, I understand what Commissioner Jones is saying, you know? What's going in Midway, we might just have to say, it, it needs to be going down there in, in his district, if that's a part of his district, and he don't want to spend it in Midway, let's spend it on the dirt road. End of discussion.
Well, I, I guess when you look at it, it's, it's um, the cities, it, it looks like the cities, like Hinesville, for instance, you know, Hinesville gave their, you know, their, their projects. And I guess, uh, you know, even you look at Allenhurst, they're talking about sidewalk improvements from eighty-four toward Down Dunley.
That was their number one, it was on eighty-four, most of it on eighty-four.
And then um, the ones that's board of commissioners, that, that would be us, that's, that would be unincorporated in some.
Not necessarily, and that's what I was gonna tell you, is that I, I went in and put those designations beside that, because I have to do that for the bond issuance, in case a bond happens, I have to know what percentage is going to be managed by what entity. So, so that's actually, you're looking at the management entity by those.
But, but Islands Highway is the county.
That's correct.
Yeah, county all together.
And then, uh, now, and then we got like the record, James Brown Park, that's, that's in Flemington, is that in Flemington, or that's in the county?
That's borderline.
Uh, borderline, Hinesville County and Flemington, but we manage it, I mean, it's our.
James Brown Park, part of it is in Hinesville, when you cross the canal, you're still in Hinesville?
Yep, you are, if you cross the canal and go right, you're still in Hinesville, if you cross the canal and go left, you're in Flemington, the circle comes through.
That boy that I fired for being out of town, I, I need to bring him back then.
But you are responsible for that part, the, the first, the first three that are up there, and I don't get into a lot of detail unless you want to on them, but the first three were continuation projects, where it's just like the Interstate Paper Project, the city's got those projects lined up, but the cost of materials and stuff has gone up, so they needed supplement to finish those projects, is basically what that is. And then the signal out there was a mayor of Altaville, um, even though it's relatively low comparatively, that's where um, if you pass the Dollar Store going towards one ninety-six, where there's really no staging median there, no staging area to turn a left, and there's a brand-new subdivision gonna go in. And then the signal out there was the mayor of Waltiveville, um, even though it's relatively low comparatively, that's where, um, if you pass the Dollar Store going towards one ninety-six, where there's really no staging median there, no staging area to turn a left, and there's a brand new subdivision gonna go in, um, back in that area, so that's really needed a signal there. Um, these are some various signalization projects on one ninety-six and Hinesville, and then you got Islands Highway, the E G Miles is a supplemental, uh, to the city, and then those two that are in Flemington, um, especially the Patriots Trail, I'm sorry, the Wallace Martin at, at eighty-four realignment. If that's not done, you won't be getting in Hinesville easy, uh, 'cause they're gonna put a new signal for Publix right there where that subdivision comes out, and then you're still gonna have the traffic guards that have to stage for the school, and it's not gonna move through there. So, that road alignment is on our Transportation Improvement Project list, and it, it definitely needs to happen to do that. That's, that's a heavy hitter. That other one, the Patriots Trail Connector, will help us get people out of our ballpark at James Brown, 'cause right now, they're, they're having to come out to a non-signalized intersection, either over by the Health Department, or over by N Mark, or either try to go to residential areas to get back to the jet, which is already crowded. So, there was a, if you go behind Walmart, before you go in there's apartments, you'll notice there's a traffic circle. There's actually an easement that cuts through from that traffic circle over to Patriots Trail, and that's what it was meant for. And so, that will take, that, those folks from the ballpark then will be able to come to the circle and get to a traffic light at Walmart, so it's much safer to get them out of there.
Joey also right there coming out there, you're getting ready to add that other gas station.
You are. You're getting ready to add the Wawa.
Another gas station.
Just going there. The big Wawa is going there. That, that next one is, is one that I really ask to be put on there, y'all, is, um, if you're coming down eighty-four, going towards Flemington, and I think we talked about this, where you turn into the Recreation Office right there and to the Pavilion, I mean, there's no turn lane.
Right.
And so, you're staging in Highway eighty-four, which is, just hadn't worked well at all. I'm just surprised I haven't been killed. So, what Trent and I looked at was basically putting a turn lane in there and then widening those entrances too, because barely two cars can get in and out of there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's very difficult for us.
We, we talked about that the other night, when I asked you about the new Health Department. Why not take it from there all the way up?
Well, you don't, uh, well, no, 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 because you, you want traffic, you don't want the folks coming out of the Health Department to use part of it as an acceleration lane, and then part trying to get in for a deceleration lane. You need to really have a break in there.
Right. Stay, I'd like to stay in the...
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't want folks coming out trying to, trying to get in that lane, travel down to merge, and then you got a person trying to come to get in, to turn out.
But Commissioner Jones, we, we, the, Tim was trying to spread them all over the county, as Commissioner Frey said, to get county buy-in, so that Midway and Riceboro and everybody would have reason to support.
Mr. Chairman, also, um, and like I said, I guess I'm looking for sympathy from us, especially, you all know, like, uh, Commissioner Gillett says, um, he, all of his district is in municipalities.
Hit hit.
So, um, you know, it's a fairly dirt road up there, so here it is, uh, ninety percent of my interaction with the citizens I represent, ninety percent of it is about dirt roads. So, when I tell them, hey, I don't have enough money to pave your dirt road, and then they see these numbers of money that we're supposedly spending, and I tell them, I can't pave their dirt road because of lack of funding, um, that's kinda hard to sell, and, but I want them to support this T-Splash, and the majority of the money is being spent in other districts, where, yes, we all in the county together, but, um, it's hard for me to sell that to those people that's been on dirt roads. This one, uh, couple that I'm dealing with now, they gave the county the right-of-way for their land thirty years ago to pave the road, and it hasn't been paved, so here it is thirty years later, I'm getting beat up because the road's not been paved, and I ain't been here but three years. So, how can I sell these people, look at them with a straight face and say, hey, we gonna pave your road eventually when I get this collection from T-Splash, when it probably won't happen? I mean, three million dollars, it's a lot of money, you know, it sounds like a lot, but you go to paving roads, y'all know better than I do that it don't stretch that far, and being in a district that has pretty much the most miles of dirt roads, if not the number of dirt roads in the county, um, it's kinda hard to sell to those residents how great T-Splash is.
Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Jones, let me say this.
Please, please.
I've got the...
He has the most dirt roads.
I've got the most dirt roads.
Yeah, yeah.
The most dirt roads in the county, and I understand what you're saying, but also, like, I had doubts and I had questions about the Interstate Paper Road, okay? That's in the City of Riceboro, part of it. Matter of fact, most of that road is in the City of Riceboro, but Riceboro don't have the, the funds to do it. Now, and I heard what Commissioner Walden said, but also, this is part of what Riceboro wanted, to get Riceboro to buy in. Now, I see another road on here, it says Butler Avenue, that's nothing but grocery stores, you know? So, I guess that's what City of...
Midway.
Midway wanted. It, it's not an easy thing to get you, get your hands around, and I do understand what you're saying, but just for clarification, District One do have about twenty-eight miles of dirt roads still left.
I don't know why you got to start over with dirt roads.
Mr. Jones, that's, that's the one reason why when we, it used to be the, the, the commission members in the city, we didn't, we didn't get any money. It all went into the county. So, we decided we would make sure it was split up equal, and that's when you could look to your left and say, guys, I need a little help, and look to the right and say, I need a little help. And we've tried, I've worked on, I mean, the Commissioner Thriss project out on, uh, the, the one that was on Airport Road. Everybody tried to ante up a little bit, and we're gonna continue to do that, but I mean, that's just trying to work together. Now, when Commissioner Boyham was there, it, I guess it was toward the last time he was there, we finally got that, we got that to where everybody gets the same amount of money, and, um, you know, there, like you said, there are some roads right here that are in the city limits of Flemington. Now, there's some right here that's on the list that's in the county, so, you know, I can make that decision, do I wanna try to help them? I might wanna help them, but it may not be the, the whole bag of candy, I might give them half the candy. So, that's what I'm saying, you need help, and Trent's already got it engineered, and he knows that is in fact the right-of-way. Now, I know some of the places down there, Commissioner Boyham had it, they said, we give you the right-of-way. Well, they give them the right-of-way, but they think that it's, the right-of-way, in, in order to spend some money on it, you know, you need to have a good right-of-way, you need to have forty feet. Well, forty feet from this house, it, you're in the front doorstep to this one, so that's why I'm saying, this, you know, I don't mind helping you, I will, I know everybody else will, so, um, we're not gonna leave you hanging out in the cold.
No, Mr...
I think we will.
Nah, we, we...
The last thing I got to say about this is that, and I know this is between Commissioner Gillett and Commissioner Walden, the distribution of it down at the bottom, I don't know if y'all wanna leave it like it is, since now Commissioner Walden, you have some of the rural area and Commissioner Gillett don't, it's just a matter of swap, but that's between the two of you all. If you, if you look at, see what I'm talking about, but it's no...
Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of that, and, and I've got an area that's got...
They'll talk about that tomorrow and on the truck.
Four hundred and something, or five hundred and something acres, that is fixing to be built houses on, that there's gonna be roads that need to be put in there, and later on down the line, somebody's got to fix them.
Well, what, you know, what I'm saying though, as, as free-hearted as I've been with money since I've been here, for, 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 for Commissioner Stevenson, look over there and say, hey, he, he got more than you, take that, and I'm already giving it away.
I have never seen him hold his hand up.
Man, I, I don't, um...
I mean, I got more money in, in, uh, Miller Park down there than I do in James Brown Park.
To reel this in, but Commissioner Jones, that, that, the, the, the road, the thirty-year road, you might wanna get some numbers on that from Trent.
Yeah, get down to Trent.
Yeah, let us get some other things behind us, and we'd be willing to help with that, if that's, if that's what you consider a priority.
I mean, you know, find, find, find...
That is an example of stuff that I hear that I go through, and that's just the tip of the iceberg.
Find, find, find your, uh, uh, project maxing, and, uh, and, um, yeah, we're, we're happy with it.
I've been doing good with what, um, we have, because like I said, I, my district, well, the district I represent has the same amount of, um, funds available as all of the rest, so it's not so much war with me, but then the demand that far as dirt roads go is much more than maybe some of the other districts, and, um, as I said, I hear it every day. It's not just one phone call, five or ten. Like I said, if I get fifty phone calls, forty of them about somebody dirt road.
Yeah.
And in all fairness to you, you have not been a commissioner thirty years, sir.
I try to impress that upon them, but that goes to their deals.
I just wanna ask one question. One question, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
The pickleball, is that, you already got that laid out, I mean?
Oh, no, that, that, that's been scratched, sir. That, that's, that's been scratched.
I've actually, uh, already, already asked Mr. Long to go ahead and, and finish the design for the soft, for what was before, on the softball with the rest of the walking trail and stuff, so he's working on that part of it.
All right.
Okay.
So, so as, as we progress, the, the timeline is, we have to be able to call for the election, uh, no later than your, uh, meeting in July. So, I'll be bringing back to you a final, um, intergovernmental agreement that all the other cities will have passed by the time I bring it back. They have to pass it before it comes back to you, so I'll bring that back for you. I'll, I'll give you that ahead of time, though, don't, don't worry. I mean, you'll get it to see it, it'll be this breakout, it'll be a little more about the bonding and everything, it'll be the same thing we had last time. We will have the ability to go ahead and bond these projects, if you wanted to fast start some of them, uh, to get it done. Rogers Pasture may be a great example, as fast as it's tearing up, we may wanna go ahead and bond that project and at least get that asphalt in there, 'cause it's in very bad shape. But any others too, any others that are there?
All right.
Okay?
Capital of the project, what did?
Uh, just real quickly, Mr. Long, hit on a couple of these. I, I expect the, the health and, health insurance, I expect the Health Department bids to be in here first Tuesday in June. The committee will meet, you'll have that back before you by the second meeting in June, to be able to take a look at, provided we get some good, some good bids in there. Uh, he mentioned the Road Department. I don't wanna say it's ahead of schedule, but it really is. They're working great, uh, on that. And the Fire Department, he mentioned, uh, doing some stuff out there. We've actually, the C O's been issued for that, and so they have already moved in. Fire has transitioned from over here at the I T building, or E M A building down there, and then as we wrap that up, you know, it, they'll finish moving in, so to speak, but they're occupying the building now. Everything's been changed over to that. Um, last thing I wanna show you was, um, something, and tell you, health insurance transition is moving along very, very rapidly. They laid this on my desk the other day for me to see. This is a, the company that y'all chose to go with, uh, Oak Ridge Insurance, actually took the information that Laura had in a pamphlet last year and put it in a bound edition, uh, for the employees. We've been going through open enrollments, with us a complete guide to everything that the county has available, with an explanation to it. Again, Laura had done it in a pamphlet form last year, but it was, it was really good. It's really, really, really well done, it's very informative to the people. Uh, that transition's going very, very well, so they've had all the workshops, they've had, uh, some at the jails, some at the, uh, other law enforcement areas, some at the courthouse and some here, and they've been very well attended. So, and it's also been recorded, so, uh, Amber, that was here with you, has been at every session, and Matt, with most of them, I think Matt may have missed one, but, um, but they've been very, very good to work with, so we're, we're moving on with that transition.
Yeah. Any response has been good?
The response has been very good, very, very good.
Helping in retention and attract, and recruitment?
Yes, sir. It'll be good, thank you.
I, I, I just have two things, uh, just, just real quick, uh, before we leave, uh, I, uh, in the last week, we've lost, uh, two great citizens here. Uh, Mr., Mr., uh, Mr. Baker, Joe Baker, in Commissioner Walden's district, uh, he passed, uh, the other day. Then also, uh, one of my fellow past classmates, uh, uh, his, his mom was a, a teacher here for a long time, Ms. Collier, uh, yeah, Gerard Collier, he, he passed the other day, uh, so let's just keep, keep the family, I know, in, in prayers. Uh, you know, he, he's a graduate from Liberty County High, went off the Ford Valley, went off the U G A, got his doctoral at, uh, at Howard, and so, uh, he was a, a great young man, he was, uh, a friend and a, and a brother, so just, let's just continue to pray for the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioners, don't forget the, uh, fire graduation on May the twenty-second at six-thirty at the Sam Harris Gym. Also, I've scheduled a meeting with the E M A Director for Hurricane Briefing on June the tenth at the complex, and if there is a runoff, then it will be in the gym, still at six o'clock. Schedule one for Riceboro on the, June the twelfth at the Riceboro Youth Center, and also, uh, thanks to all who participated in the process of having the V A clinic renamed. The process is pretty well passed, just waiting on a dedication day. Uh, um, President Biden has already signed off on it, so to those who participated from this board members, I wanna say thank you.
Good job. Thank you, sir. Officer, thank you.
It's on the way.
Anything that's a good order.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, stand adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, sir.